I want to welcome everyone to our May Board of Education meeting. We call this our meeting to order. And we have the privilege of having Mr. James Madison here for helping us in prayer and then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please bow.
God, thank you for this day. Thank you for allowing us to get here and say, "Thank you for this school." I pray for these board members and I pray for our school staff in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please, your honor. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, James.
Next on our agenda is the consent items consisting of the agenda. Minutes of the April 13th meeting. Rental of facilities. Middle school fundraiser. And a high school, no, just a middle school fundraiser.
I make a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
All right, we have a motion to accept the consent items as presented.
Second.
Have a second. I'm Ms. Markstel. All in favor? You guys?
Oh, God.
And we have no public participation, so we're going to go into financials. Ms. Bufford.
Okay, the first thing we see is the, excuse me, general fund. You can see that we are now at eighty-three point three three percent of our year complete at the end of April. And on our revenues, we are at ninety-two point nine nine percent. So we are above where we need to be on our revenues, on our collections of revenues. You can see if you look down the column, there are several of those. We've actually collected more than a hundred percent of those. So that is very good that we are over budget on those items. On the expenditures, we are the opposite. We are under. We are at seventy-seven point seven three percent. So again, a good position to be at at eighty-three point three percent of our year complete.
Ms. Bufford, I know, before you go further, I know with the title TAVT, I mean, we're still trying to figure all that part out. But as far as the, just the regular local avalanche taxes, how often do we go above a hundred percent on that?
We don't normally, I don't believe.
That's why I didn't remember.
So this is, apparently, we're collecting some back taxes so that, you know, some of those prior years are coming in that are... I know she is also being more up to date, you know, getting the money to us. So I think that's making a difference as well.
Okay.
On our balance sheet, you can see we've still got about four million in the bank. I think we had about four point one last month, so we're still holding our own of that. Our fund balance is at three point two one nine. We were at three point two seven six million last month. So again, the equity is holding. We are using some of that tax money, so that will go down a little bit as we keep going through the year. But the general fund seems to be in pretty good shape. When you get to our SPOST, you can come down one more. SPOST collections, again, SPOST is up this month. I don't know what's happening with our SPOST, but seventy-two thousand one eighty-nine eighty-one is a good place to be. If you look back at the April previous, that's the highest we've had in an April in more than eight years or maybe ever. So that's a good thing. We're at six hundred seventy-one thousand for the year, so the SPOST is looking good. On our summary page, you can see that we have two hundred forty-one four nine ninety-seven in the SPOST bank account, three seventy-eight eight ninety-seven eighty-six on the bonds. And that gives us six twenty-three oh seven eighty-three towards our next bond and interest payments. That first one will be September thirtieth of 2021. So we're, we have enough to cover. It'll, October will be slightly different, but approximately the amount of that one. So we have enough to cover that and then some. So our SPOST is looking really good. On our capital projects, we went ahead and made the transfer. We had budgeted forty thousand to transfer into capital projects to hold for specific big items. And so we went ahead and made that transfer, so we've got ninety-two thousand. That's not been allocated to a specific project that is available for projects in the future.
Any questions from Ms. Bufford on the financials? Okay, then we'll go on into our pledge of hearing.
So you have some sheets in front of you regarding the budget. The first one is just a discussion. This is, if you remember, we presented one in April, just to give you an idea of some of the things that will be changed from last year's budget to this year's budget. And we have a few of those blanks filled in that I left with zeros last month. We're still working on it, but we have what we would like to propose as a tentative budget tonight, so as of maybe eleventh. You can see the changes that we did put in. We've got some more certificate upgrades, found out some more teachers were upgrading. We've got some employee replacements in there. We took out two bus routes. We had two bus routes that had not been filled in a couple of years. One was the Head Start route, and I had been leaving that in, thinking that that route was going to be picked back up, but it never did. And then when one of our drivers left, we kind of absorbed the routes into the other driver's routes, and so we never did replace those two. So I felt like after a couple of years, it was time to eliminate those. So I'm going to take those out for next year. We added in a bond bus. The bond bus, we're getting the money this year. I don't know if you remember hearing in the news, but when the governor passed the amended budget, part of that included bonds for certain counties, and we were one of them. So we have the money, but we are not going to be able to get the bus before June thirtieth. It takes about six months to process and order the bus because they have to make it to our specs. So what we're going to do, we'll have the money because the state is sending it to us. So that will be in a reserve specifically for a bus replacement. So we'll have the, it's eighty-five thousand two twenty is what we should have that will be in that reserve, but we won't actually spend the money on the bus until next year. So I increased the fund balance. If you'll notice, the fund, the estimated fund balance has up July one. I bumped that up for the bus reserve and then put in the actual cost of the bus. So that's why there's an additional bus there. And we already had one bond bus in the budget for '22 that we were proposing because we think the state will give us another one when they allot buses, which is different. I don't, they're doing this differently for some reason and sending it with our QVE money. So I don't know how they're coming up with these things, but as long as they give us the money, we're good. So we just want to, we can't match the bus, the bond revenue with the bus in this year. So it'll be in a reserve and then we'll match it up next year. We added a maintenance assistant and we added a finance director assistant. Both of those are estimated at this point. We'll try to figure and get that a little bit closer as we come towards the final budget on that. But those are the main changes. We added back the transfer to the capital grants. We have fifty thousand dollars there. So you can see with those adjustments, we're still coming up with an estimated fund balance of eight forty-three five ninety-four, which is fairly close to what we had when we set our original budget this year. It's kind of low, but you remember I take out the impact aid. So if we put that impact aid back in, then that would bring it back up to approximately what we've got in our amended budget this year. I'm not quite slapping because I'm so conservative, I know. The second page is the tentative budget, which we would like for you to pass tonight. We'll discuss it a little bit more, but you can see you have the general fund, the special revenue funds, the capital projects, and the debt service. General fund is the main one that you're concerned as far as the local taxes. The special revenue is a lot of the grants that we get from the state and federal governments along with the school food service. The capital projects is, you know, what it says, the money we're saving for specific projects. And the debt service is to go pay off the interest and principal on the bonds. We'll come back to this one. The next page just shows you the changes in the general fund from '21 to '22. Now, I did use the amended budget for '21, so it's got some of the changes that took place during the year. The biggest thing is taking out the impact aid as far as the federal revenues. You see, those are lower. The state sources are higher. That's our QVE revenues were higher this year, even after the governor put back in a part of the adjustment that he added. We still got a little more in QVE this year. And some of the grants, I believe, were also a little higher. So in the expenditures, those kind of go up and down just depending on what was specifically budgeted for those items. But that just gives you a kind of a comparison between last year and this year. And the last page is the general fund percentages, which just gives you an idea of where our money is coming from and where it's going. You can see in the proposed '22, our local taxes count for about thirty-five point eight seven percent of our revenues. Our state sources, which is mainly our QVE, is sixty point eight three percent. So that's a, pretty much where it's, I think it's supposed to be sixty forty roughly. So that's, that's pretty close to where we're supposed to be when you add in the other local sources. So that's not too bad. On the expenditure side, you can see most of our expenditures go to instruction. That's sixty percent. The next biggest one would be maintenance and operation and administration, which are both, excuse me, transportation are both at a little over nine percent, and then administration at eight percent. So this just gives you an idea of kind of how, how the money is spread between all the different uses that we have for it. As in years past, we checked the salaries and expenditures. That's about eighty-five point, eighty-five percent of our budget is in salaries and benefits. So that's pretty consistent through the years that that's about how that runs. So what I would like for you to do tonight, if you are willing, is to go ahead and pass the tentative budget for '22, which is being proposed here. You have to pass a tentative budget at least two weeks prior to passing your final budget. So our plan is to pass the tentative budget at this meeting, the May meeting, pass the final budget at the June meeting. Now, in the meantime, we would have to have one more public hearing, and we'll need to get you to set that date tonight because you have to have two public hearings before you have your passage of the final budget.
Any questions on the proposed budget? Ms. Bufford, I noticed on the revenue of local taxes, you have it up some. Is that just based on this year or, because I know we don't have a digest or anything yet, so...
Right. What I did, we didn't make an adjustment to it in the amended budget for '21, so I adjusted it to what is ninety-six percent of what's projected, what the digest was for last year.
Okay.
So, and yes, that may be why we're a little bit over this year. We actually adjusted in the amended budget to that, that may bring it more in line. So we can do that if we want to.
I got a question.
Okay.
Other expenditures, number twenty-five hundred, business services. That's going up seventy-five thou, what is that?
That's my office, so that's the finance director's assistant.
Okay. Business services, okay.
Any other question?
You feel good about it?
I'm sorry?
You feel good about it?
About leaving?
Nobody mentioned that.
About the budget? Yes. Yes, I feel pretty good about it.
We see what she's thinking.
Yes, sir, we do.
I mean, we, are we, it seems like we're in a strong, good place right now.
I feel like we are, yeah.
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept this as a tentative budget.
Second.
Have a second. I'm Ms. Markstel. Any other discussion? All in favor? You guys? You know, we need to talk about a date for our next meeting for a, just a budget hearing.
Ms. Bufford, you had made a suggestion, I apologize for interrupting, but you had made a suggestion on the date. You said, I believe, May eighteenth to the twenty-fifth. Am I correct there?
Well, we have to advertise it in the paper, so it has to be...
So it has to be the twenty-fifth?
Yes, it has to be that week of the...
The week of the twenty-fifth, I should say.
It could be the twenty-first, but if you want to do it on a Tuesday, the twenty-fifth would be...
Well, we got to advertise it in the paper, so we want to give them time to do their thing.
Right.
Does the twenty-fifth work for everybody?
What time is it going to be?
Well, that was the second question.
Well, that, you were going to ask, is it a daytime meeting or is it afternoon?
It can be whatever.
We've done both, so what works best for, for the board is how we normally make that decision. We could do it in the morning because sometimes the morning works better for Ms. D., but if she's on a different schedule, maybe the evening works better.
The evening.
The evening, all right.
This time seven or five or, I mean, just for those that are new, I mean, if we have fifteen, twenty people here to speak against it or four, it could take a while. We have none, it could take five and...
Can we do the twenty-fifth roughly around this time?
You want to say seven, which would be consistent for the community, if that doesn't mess y'all up.
That's good for the planning.
Good.
Seven or twenty-six.
What's going on as far as school?
That's the academic ceremony for the middle school.
Oh, middle school?
But now, for the... Just make limits on cares, we're being up here and...
High school has something going on every night that week, so...
If you'll, if you'll look in the back of the stack of papers you've got in front of you, there's events there.
Could we do it at six-thirty? Is that during the morning?
No, six-thirty at night.
It's six-thirty in the morning?
I'd say maybe.
Do you have a daytime that you could do that week?
It doesn't have to be the twenty-fifth, but it should be that week.
It could be any time of the week.
Now, I'm off on the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, I mean, I'm off on today's. But I mean, I'll try to make some adjustments.
If you're off on the twenty-sixth, we could do it on the twenty-sixth. You want to do that at six in the morning?
Yeah, I can do anything from six.
Or it's like eight or nine?
Whatever works for y'all.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter to me.
No.
Nine o'clock?
You like it?
All right, Brian, fine.
I turn.
I'll do that.
Nine o'clock on the twenty-sixth.
May twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth?
Sure. Twenty-sixth and...
Twenty-sixth at nine a.m.
Nine o'clock on the twenty-sixth.
Do we have anything that day?
Is there enough heat?
We do, they'll be in school that day, so we'll be fine. Not till, not till the evening do we have anything, other than regular school, which they should be in.
Did you want me to do the cares now or...?
Yes, ma'am.
We have one more thing to show you. We're still working on this because they keep changing things daily. But so we just kind of wanted to update you on the proposals for the cares budget. And we talked about last time, there are three different cares acts. One and two are both cares, and then there's the ARP, which is cares three. There's this big name in it.
There's two, perfect.
The cares one, we spent on, this year, on the fine arts teachers' salaries and benefits. The cares two, we've given you a list of some things that we have planned to do with it, and then we've also added to that several items and have actually proposed that to the state. So we're waiting to hear back from them, but we would like for you to, I think, approve it tonight. Is that what you want to talk about?
That's my plan, yes, ma'am, if the board will approve.
On the cares two, you can see those are all taking place in '21 or '22. So those would be maintaining the fine arts teachers for another year into '22. We talked about that last time. Buy Chromebooks, some floor covering, some floor scrubbers. All of those are allowable because they help to disinfect and keep the schools cleaner, which helps cut down on the passage of the virus. The retention supplements in social security, that's the ones that the state did not cover, and that was also considered a permissible expenditure for that. Then we're proposing the summer school for the high school and middle school. Some summer days that the administrators have already done back last summer. And then school nutrition excess cost, where the lunch run is having to spend more on containers and things to make it less contact with the students. So all of those so far have been considered acceptable expenditures, so...
Question, is the, the summer school, high, middle, is it the same as we did last year kind of, or is that the actual?
The summer school, high, and middle is more of a retention or regaining of loss. The one that we do, that we did last year, is more of a reading camp, targeting children that are struggling in that area, also not passing, but that focuses more on reading. This focuses on the classes you did not pass and trying to get...
So it's back to the, correct.
That's what, old school summer school. Yes, sir. That's what I want to, thank you. So we're doing both this year.
Okay.
The third page is the ARP, and you can see we, you know, some things we think we put in as sort of a definite and then some are left as a, still possibilities that we're looking at. The main thing we, we would like to do is the air conditioning units. That's, we're estimating another six hundred thousand. We've got three hundred thousand in cares two, and we think it'll take about nine hundred to replace all of those units. The instructional coaches, we had talked about last time, and then some of the flooring that we definitely wanted to do, like the gym floor at elementary schools. So all of that's still in there as, as things we would like to do. And then some of the others are, if, are, like I said, it's possibilities. That one, we're just kind of updating you on, but the cares two, we'd like to have it approved if that's agreeable.
Cares three, if I may, they continue to change what they want before we submit it for approval. They being the state. Initially, it was duplicate of what cares two was requiring. And then they sent out an email last Tuesday, I think it was, and then you watched a webinar, and then they expanded on things that they wanted, and then you had to have this done before you submitted cares three, and they keep adding to that. So we're still waiting on cares three to get all the information before it is submitted. But right now, this is, what we're looking at is, is our anticipation to do with cares three.
The three forty for the high school classroom flooring, what issues are we having with that? I mean, that's a ten-year-old building.
A lot of the classrooms have got cracked tile, and that is part of the placeholder. I'm not telling you we're going to spend all of that amount, but we were trying to get close to the required amount in case we had to submit that budget. So that's why we pulled it back to possibilities. So that's not an exact figure by any means, but we were looking at some of the cracked flooring in the high school. Like as an example, at the high school cafeteria, definitely has cracked flooring.
What about the cracked parking lot at the elementary school?
I was fixing to ask. I was, I was fixing to ask, do parking lots, are they in the...
That's not, that's not on here because we were looking at interior as opposed to exterior. We got permission to do floors. I haven't asked for permission to do parking lot because I don't think that's going to pass the COVID test in the, in the federal government's mind. I can ask, but I don't think that would pass.
The dust coming off the gravel is affecting the air conditioning vent. The air conditioning units on top of the building.
I can try if you would like me to.
Aren't you happy with that? What is iview?
Iview is an electronic software package that allows us to control the temperature in individual classrooms from a distance. As an example, like at Pat's house or at my house or wherever we would have connection, we could control the temperature. It allows us to turn things down, turn it up. As an example, it's happened in the past where we had a situation or a event in the gym or in the auditorium, and currently at three-thirty, that building goes down to unoccupied mode. If you're having something going on in the gym, it drops down to seventy-seven degrees in the summer, which is quite warm to do a cheerleading tryouts event as an example. So as opposed to overriding it, you can call Pat and he can do it from the house if a principal is already gone. So it gives us a lot of flexibility. It also gives us a lot of control of how the air conditioning is used. It drops back to seventy-seven, saves us a lot of money, to be honest.
That is a lot of money.
It is. I agree.
I know it's a budgetary number, of course.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I just curious what it was.
So you said that we need, you need an approval of these expenditures, one and two and three, or...
One's been approved. Two, we're trying to get approved for tonight. And three, I really don't want to approve it until the state gives us all the requirements. Because for me to say this is what we're going to do and the state changed their mind, then I'm fibbing to the board, and I don't want to do that.
So we're, as far as from a voting standpoint tonight, we're looking at cares two, which is the items that we've been discussing for meetings now. Any questions on any other?
And those IC units are just for the high school, middle school, right?
No, sir, we did some of the units over there as well.
So it is over there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I recall the dishwasher floor.
The dishwasher is a placeholder for three, and I haven't gotten it approved yet, which is why it's a possibility. They applied for a grant because the dishwasher over here is very old. The one over here is ten years old, and they're not as effective as the current ones. And the higher water temperature obviously is more sanitary, so we wanted to replace the dishwashers if we could. Especially that one. That one's outdated and more... That one's outdated and wore out.
Can we get a price on the elementary school parking lot, just so we will know?
I, I can. The last price, I don't remember well enough to quote you that price. I had.
Well, everything's up.
Yes, sir, I had Hamilton give me a price a while ago, and it was quite high, in my opinion. But I will try and get a price, but I'll also see if, if they would approve it as a cares act function or if we would do it out of something else.
You talking about doing asphalt or concrete? Asphalt?
I had planned on asphalt.
Okay.
Did, did you want concrete?
No, I didn't know that Hamilton did that.
Hamilton gave me a, a price on asphalt.
Okay. I can give you some numbers.
Okay.
Context.
Okay.
For asphalt.
Again, tonight, we're just, we're looking at cares two, items on cares two as well.
I'll make a motion, we approve it.
You have a motion now, Mr. Hytman, to approve the expenditures mentioned in the cares two?
Second.
You have a second by Mr. Madison. Any further discussion, questions on the other? Again, this is just cares two. All right, all in favor? All right, unanimous?
Thank you all.
Now, on cares three, are we even, I mean, any of that coming through right now? I mean, I see some of it, just has the FY22 on it, but all of that's being delayed, right?
Right. Everything is, is on hold until we can get approval through the state to get all this done, except the very top, which would be the instructional coaches and salaries, which the board approved at the primary. Right.
Okay, next on the agenda is policy for revision.
This policy has a couple of minor revisions, just trying to update it, which is always necessary. The first page changed the word document to credit and then may include move on when ready and off-campus offerings. The second page, we made a notation with the little asterisk to identify that we, as a school board, based on the state board rule 160-5-1-33, have the SWSS partnership contract, which allows us the flexibility to alter the number of credits. Now, we haven't done that, obviously. If anything, we've gone up, we're above the requirement. But that asterisk needs to be in there, and so does the minimum clock hours because we waived all of that. As you move down to the next page, Georgia Performance Standards, or GPS, do not exist anymore. They're all Georgia Standards of Excellence, which is GSE. Soon as you get used to an acronym, we change it, but GSE are now required. So we had to take those out. Moving down to the next page, you'll see under number six, we made the same asterisk for the same reason, same identification. Page five, under number seven, the, the same GPS, GSE change, and that's it. Just trying to update the policy for accuracy.
Any questions about this policy? Okay. We'll move on to superintendent's reports.
Okay, a couple of things to try and bring this up to speed here. In front of you, I had put down, I call it events to complete 2021. Basically, these are all dates by school that the board normally attends. I, I'm not saying you're required, I'm just trying to educate you on dates. So if there's something on there that you definitely want to see, then the date is in front of you. The time that it starts is in front of you. As an example, coming up quickly, the High School Musical is always a favorite, 20 to 22. Each night, it starts at 7:30. Purchase tickets online. So take a look at that, and if you want to attend, it's always a wonderful show. All of those are available. Obviously, graduation is June 4th at 8:00 p.m. down at Buddy Bufford Field, and the last day of school is June 4th. So we should be able to attend most of those. I know there's a whole lot there. You're not required to attend any. I just want you to know what's going on. This entire board, for the community's information, attended whole board training last Tuesday over at the Washington Wilkes Board of Ed building. The gentleman, Tony Rossi, that did that training for us, I talked to him afterwards in regards to our additional three-hour training. That additional three-hour training, we can have whatever we want. And we had talked about at that meeting, that paper that he passed out from Carroll County Policy BH Procedures, which dovetails real well into the board ethics policy that we have. Now, Tony is more than happy to be the facilitator of that event via Zoom, so the cost would be down for us. He can facilitate the whole thing and walk us through it. He was hoping to do it either June 1 or June 3, starting at 2 o'clock or 3 o'clock. And if that's a conflict, those are not required dates, I just, I asked him to throw out a date that he could do it. We can push it back in June if we need to, or however it works for y'all.
One or three?
One or three. He was thinking in the afternoon, it's going to take us three hours. So you figure you start at 2, you're, you're out at 5.
June 3.
Y'all okay with 3?
It'll make us Thursday, right?
Yes.
Yes, and then Friday would be graduate.
Right. June 3 at 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock, Ms. D?
It doesn't matter what time.
Okay. Anybody else? Sooner the better. Okay.
I mean, earlier today.
Right. 2 o'clock, okay? All right. We'll call it 2 o'clock on the 3rd. Okay, I will get ahold of Tony. Tony also recommended that the sheet for the whole board governance team training that he passed out, that had the, the area where you could write underneath. I got enough copies for everybody again for tonight, if you don't have yours. But he suggested, before we get into this meeting, to have that filled out and bring it with you. So I wanted to get it back out again tonight. And that's all I have for superintendent's report.
Okay. Need a motion to go in the executive session?
Well, make a motion in the executive session.
Motion by Ms. Barstow, second by Ms. Madison. Call our meeting back to order. It is recommended that I make a motion that we hire Mr. Matthew Heslett as a sixth-grade inclusion teacher in middle school for 2021, 2022 school year. I have a second by Mr. Hytman, all in favor? Unanimous? It is recommended that I make a motion that we have, hire Ms. Ashley Rivera as the English Language Arts teacher for the Lincoln County Middle School for the 2021, 2022 school year. I have a second by Ms. Hytman, all in favor? Unanimous? It is recommended that I make a motion that we hire Ms. Christian Wilder Jackson as a math teacher for the Lincoln County High School for the 2021, 2022 school year. I have a second by Ms. Barstow, all in favor? Unanimous? It is recommended that I make a motion that we accept the retirement of Ms. Bobby Jean Hogan effective June 30, 2021. I have a second by Mr. Madison, all in favor? Unanimous? It is recommended that I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Ms. Sarah Rutledge-Poyle effective June 1, 2021. I have a second by Mr. Hytman, all in favor? Unanimous? It is recommended that I make a motion that we extend the contract or add, supplement the contracts for Ms. Patty Arthur, Mr. Michael Williams, and Ms. Tanya Burke for 2021 school year to 12 months for work done in summer 2020. This, these funds will be provided through the federal dollars provided under the cares act. I have a second by Mr. Hytman, all in favor? Unanimous? It is recommended that I make a motion that we supplement the following contracts, an additional five days for 2020, 2021 school year for work done in the summer of 2020. Again, this work, this, these funds will be provided by the cares act through federal dollars. Ms. Stephanie Goldman, Mr. Daniel Tankly, Ms. Stephanie Jordan, Ms. India Freeman, Mr. Charles McDonald, and Ms. Lindsay Dunn. I have a second by Ms. Barstow, all in favor? Unanimous? It is recommended that I make a motion that we add $2,000 to the total athletic supplement fund for a soccer, for boys soccer. I have a second by Mr. Hytman, all in favor? Unanimous? Anything on this?
Want a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Hytman, second by Ms. Barstow.